Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Norton Board of Selectmen. Today is Thursday, March 29th, 2018. Let's record show that all members are present along with town manager Michael Unitz. Would you please just please?
Mr. Mr. Mary.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Okay. We have nothing on the licenses and permits. Mr. Salvo, anything under announcements?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple. First one, we have a Homestead Act. Barry J. Amaro, Registered Deeds, Bristol County ND and his staff will be hosting an informal discussion regarding the Homestead Act at the Norton Senior Center, 55 West Main Street, on Wednesday, April 4th, 2018 at 1:00 p.m. The Massachusetts Homestead Act provides limited protection of values of a home up to $500,000 against unsecured credit claims. For those interested in filing a Homestead, the following is required: resident, owner name and address, photo ID, driver's license, M.A.S.I.D., C.O.D., etc. $36 cash or check payable, Registered Deeds, B.C., N.D. That's again, that's on Wednesday, April 4th, at the Norton Senior Center at 1:00 p.m.
Anything else?
Yep. We also have, we also have a Easter egg hunt this Saturday, March 31st. It'll be held at the Everland Field on Park Street, and the rain date will be held on April 7th. And it starts at 11:45 a.m. for two-year-olds, 12:05 p.m. for three- and four-year-olds, 12:20 p.m. for five- and six-year-olds, and 12:35 p.m. for seven- and eight-year-olds. And that's this Saturday, March 31st, at the Everland Field on Park Street. That's all I have.
Mr. President? Mr. Steel?
Mr. Chairman, there's a candlelight vigil for opioid overdose deaths, and it's meant to raise awareness of this current crisis. It's sponsored by the NOPE, which is the Norton Opioid Prevention Education, and the Bristol-Norfolk Medical Reserve Corps. It will take place this coming Wednesday, April 4th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Yale School Cafeteria right here in Norton. If you have a loved one or friend you would like to have acknowledged, please forward their names to the Norton Board of Health, Board of Health Office at 285-0263. All names will be read during the vigil, and they will be battery-operated candles for the celebration. This is the second year. They did it last year, it was very well attended, so, and I encourage anybody that has any interest to attend.
What's the date and time again?
It's April 4th, which is this coming Wednesday at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. Any else?
(inaudible) What's that, Mr. Chairman?
We have an announcement, the Homestead Act, Barry J. Amaro, Registered Deeds.
(inaudible)
Do you want to read it again?
(inaudible)
Never mind.
(inaudible)
Did you say something? Okay. On a new business, we have to approve and sign the septic management program loan with the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust dated April 1st, 2018, closing documents.
Yeah, this was approved in December 2015, but we just need money now. And this is far, previously, we only used it for septic repair, but now it can be used for sewer tie-ins also. So, we were doing about five loans a year, so we figure it's going to pick up more with the use for tie-ins to the sewer system now.
That's just one year.
Yeah, you have to read the whole thing.
So, Mr. Salvo, I won't read it again.
No, you can, you can read this.
(inaudible) Good for you. No further. Can I read this one?
Yep. I, the clerk to the Board of Selectmen of Town in Norton, Massachusetts, clarify that this meeting of the Board held March 29th, 2018, of which meeting of all members of the Board were duly notified, at which a quorum was present. The following vote was passed, all which appears upon the official records of the Board in my custody. Number one, the town shall issue a bond or bonds in aggregate principal of the amount exceeded $500,000. The bonds, pursuant to Chapter 29(c) and 111 of the general laws, invoked to the town passed December 9th, 2015, Article 2, was authorized as a total borrowing of $1 million for a community septic management loan, the project. Number two, that in anticipation of insurance of the bonds, the treasurer is authorized to issue an interim loan note or notes from the time to time in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1 million. Number three, each bond or the note shall be issued as a single registered security and sold to Massachusetts Clean Water Trust at a price determined pursuant to financial agreement. Number four, the treasurer is authorized to determine the date, the form, the maximum interest rate, and the principal maturity of each bond, and note to execute a financial agreement, agreements with the trust which respect to the sale of bonds and notes such date from maturities, specify interest rates or rates of the bonds, and note to be approved by the majority of the Board of Selectmen and the treasurer, the evidence by their execution of the bonds or notes. Number five, that all actions taken to date by the town and its offices and agents to carry out the project of its financing, including the execution of any loan agreement, the treasurer, are hereby ratified approval and confirmed. And, number six, that the treasurer and the other appropriate town officials of each hereby authorized to take any of all actions necessary and convenient to carry out the provisions of this vote, including execution of delivery of the financial agreement or agreements and protect regularly agreement and agreements related to the project, and further clarify that the votes were taken at this meeting, open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that the notice stating this place, date, and time, and the agenda for the meeting, that included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk, and copied thereafter posted in a manner concretiously visual of the public of all hours in our municipal building, at the office of the town clerk is located, or in accordance with alternate method of notice prescribed or approved by the Chair General is set forth in 940 CMR 29-03, Section 2B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, remains so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberation of decision connected with the sale of the bonds or notes were taken. Exclusive section, executive sessions, all accordance with general laws, Section 30a, 18-25 as amended, dated March 29th, 2018.
A motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? (inaudible) 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 On the overall new business, we have a review and a vote on town meeting and special town meeting articles. This is for the April 11th, Mike?
Yep. Let me just go ahead.
Yeah. This is for the warrant for the special town meeting to be held on April 11th, 2018. (inaudible)
The first article is to approve a payment of prior year's bills, conservation commission, $3,785, the school department, $1,007.22, and Berry Insurance, $4,562, for a total $9,354.22, with the funds coming from free cash. And the Finance Committee recommended this article last night.
Any questions? Chairman, ten motion to support Article 1 for a total of $9,354.22. So.
Second.
Motion to second, opposed, in favor?
Aye.
(inaudible) Article 2?
Article 2 is a donation of land from the Rainbow Trust. This is property on Union Road, on the opposite side of the street, SPAC, and it's lots of land that's currently owned by the Land Preservation Society. The land is vacant, and it's approximately three acres, I believe.
3.1 acres.
3.1 acres, yep. And this was part of the deal worked out during the SPAC cleanup, that this parcel would be donated to the town.
Do you know if we ever did any inspections on the property, any windy or anything like that?
Yeah, this site is clear.
(inaudible) That's a red flag, it went up whatever.
And the Finance Committee did recommend this article.
Any questions? Chairman, ten motion to support Article 2?
(inaudible)
Questions? Opposed, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Article 3?
Article 3 is submitted by the water department, and this is seeking an additional, to borrow an additional $900,000 for the water treatment plant on Plain Street, and the Finance Committee did recommend this article. And they already have received bids, and this is a result of what their, the lowest bidder was, rather than cut out some of these important filter and also generators, because obviously, after what we've seen this winter, we want to have a generator there. So this allows them to keep that in their full bid price. And the throwing construction was the low bidder, and the total cost is $9,280,640. And construction will start this spring.
So, how much more increase was it from the original time we were helping?
I, you don't have this. I'll go through, FY13, they used $300,000 towards design out of the water budget. FY14, they used $400,000 out of the water budget towards design. Now, at the town meeting in May 2014, it was approved to borrow $8,900,000. And then, May 2016, another $930,000, and the October special town meeting, $345,000.
So, the project based on that was $10,875?
Yeah, including engineering design.
Everything, yeah. So they want to borrow $900,000, an additional $900,000, including, in addition to the appropriation I made earlier.
And that also includes part of those extra funds had to go for the archaeological things.
Correct, and that, and that was probably drove the cost up too, because this delay, with inflation and steel prices now, and things have gone up.
Pretty much the way.
Because it would have been two years ago.
Thirty months. They said it was thirty months away, because they had to work out the details with the archaeologists. Problem, like Mike just said, is the reason we're appropriating more money is, back then, 13, 14, the building trades were just starting to get going again, and now they're busy. So, now you're going to pay, because, and the whole purpose of this, this was clear, this is to build a water treatment facility on Plain Street to treat tree wells, to take out this manganese and iron issue that we have, which we're still hearing about even as of today. My water was chocolate coffee brown this morning again, and I know they're working on a hybrid down on Pine Street, but, you know, I can't wait for the day, we hope we can stop talking about water. Especially where we really have nothing to say about it anyway. Anything else on Article 3?
No, I move that we recommend Article 3.
Most in the second, any further discussion? Opposed, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, yes. Article 4?
Article 4 is to appropriate from free cash $175,000 for the five-year certification program for the assessors. This, so this will be through 2020. She wasn't aware when she originally went to town meeting that she had to get the money for the entire contract, not just what it was going to cost her the first year. And so, the entire contract is $437,500, and that's when this was completed that. And the Finance Committee recommended this article.
Well, this is mandated every, every five years, we have to re-certify property values. And even though the property values go up mostly, the tax rate goes down to offset it, so even though your property value does increase, your tax rate will drop. You still can only order, can only do two and a half percent above whatever it must be, there before, so, they're kind of, they're kind of based on, tax rate based on both factors.
And it used to be a three-year process, now it's, they've stretched it to five years by state law.
Just one question. Is there any reason that it's on the special and not on the link?
Just because she needed the money for this year.
Okay.
We did, we did, we didn't do it here, we'd have to do it in May, with the special in May, too. Just pointing it out. Any other questions, comments?
I move that we support Article 4. Second?
Second. Hold on a second.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, second. Article 5?
Article 5, and the last article, is 400, authorization to borrow $425,000 to replace the entire HVA system at the Norton Public Library. Their system right now is running at 35% efficiency. One of their boilers blew up last year. This new system will be 90 to 95% efficient. They've spent $120,000 in the past six years trying to maintain the system that they have with Band-Aid. And it's important, obviously, in the library with all the books, to have a good climate control, so there's not mildew forming on any of the books, and also for the residents that use the library. And Finance Committee recommended this article. I know that the library does have a building fund, but speaking with Bob Berg from the library, if they use this money, they would wipe out their building fund. Really, they shouldn't be dipping into the principal that way, they should be continuing to use what they earn each year. This would, they tried to get another grant. (inaudible) The local company that doesn't exist anymore, but they tried to get a grant from them, and they thought they were going to be successful, and they weren't. About, yeah, about four grand, yeah.
Just, just, if you refresh my memory, it seems like the library's been there forever, but it also looks new. How old, how old is it?
19...
The current building opened in 1991. The current library opened in 1991, meets Main Street after many, many years on Main Street there.
I was trying to remember the date on the front of the old library, I think it was 1888.
1887.
1887?
Yep.
1991 was, yeah, was when it opened, did open up, and it replaced the existing one. One thing about the library, it's one of those gray areas, it is, it is a town building, it's controlled by a board of directors, and normally, it's up to them to figure out how they're going to pay for something like this. The town, in my opinion, being generous by helping them put this in. Number one, number two, like Mike indicated, the technology and all the books and stuff we have in the building, well, and our infinite genius that we are, put everything up on the second floor, so, all these units are sitting on the second floor, and if there's anything that ever goes wrong with them, they're going to, the first floor's going to have experienced the problem. My understanding is, the new program, the new units are smaller, they're going to stage them differently upstairs, because a few years ago, we had to replace one, they had to take the first one out of the building, put it on the ground, and get to the second one. These new ones are going to be laid out so they can get them, you know, whenever they have to get them, along with any improvements on the structure itself, ventilation system, I think they're changing everything out. There may be some days when the, the library will be closed, while it's under construction, so.
One other question.
Yep.
This is, any estimate on how much is going to cost annually to repay them? I'll check with the town clerk, I mean, town treasurer.
How long-term, loan balance is going down, right, Mike?
Yes.
So, something where we have to make a big difference.
Regardless, it's going to be done, so, I recommend that we support that. Second?
Second. Any further discussion? Hold on a second.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, second.
And I think you also have in your packet, I presented a budget to the Finance Committee last night, they started voting on some of the smaller budgets, and the total expense for the town is $58,615,000. Let me say that again. $58,615, $492 for a total budget. $28 million for the school department, and $12,359,860 for the town side of government, which includes the library also. And so that's a 2.8% increase for the school department, 1.45% increase for the town, inclusive of the library. And in order to accomplish that, once again, we have slashed the overtime accounts for police, fire, communications, and hopefully in the fall, we can rebuild some of, some of the overtime.
Mr. Flaherty?
Mike, what was the, what was the request from the schools, their budget?
Their request, I didn't bring the book up, it was...
Substantially higher?
Yeah, about 11% increase.
Yeah, okay.
This is a 2.8.
Perfect, thank you.
Also, I heard you talking last night about the streetlights, $120,000 a year we're paying for those. Have we made any, I know we were talking, I think we agreed that we go with National Grid?
National Grid's going to give us the streetlights, and I'm waiting for David Dineski from Golden Page to review whether we have to go out to bid for everything we do on that.
When you say give them to us, does that mean they're going to give them to us and we're responsible for them, or they're going to take care of them?
No, they would give them to us, and then we'd be responsible for changing them out, and then from now on, we'd be responsible for our lives.
I thought we worked out a deal with them, that they would come in and actually take, replace them, and we wouldn't have to do that.
They, they did look at that too, but the savings isn't that great if they do that.
My only concern is, now we suddenly own these lights, we got to take care of them. So, we're going to have to figure out a way to hire another side company to go and treat, if a tree takes one out, or if it comes down during a storm or a chyrex or something, we're going to have to replace it.
I know Rockland just bought theirs, Easton bought theirs, Brockton bought theirs.
I think we all agree.
And what they have done, I asked them, they contract up. So rather than have to have your own electric bucket truck, and your guys do that, they contract that up.
Do you think the $120,000 a year will come down, or you're going to, you think we'll end up?
It will definitely come.
Even though we're allocating $120,000, we're not going to spend that. Hopefully, hopefully it will come down.
Well, yeah, I don't know how soon, we wouldn't be able to get all the lights converted over that quick, I don't think, so.
To the LEDs?
Next year.
I was on Oak Street, heading toward Nashville the other day, and I think they put some new LEDs out there. I noticed right as I went over the border, I went over the border, I said, I noticed some different kind of lighting out there, and they're very small, the head is very tiny, and it's amazing, but they throw in a lot of light. So, and the energy savings is tremendous.
Believe it or not, the streetlight out in front of my house in Oliver is just like a bulb. And they changed it to an LED, and what a difference, it's unbelievable.
You still had a bulb in it?
(inaudible)
Any other questions about the revenue expenditures, draft, right now is the draft? So right now, we have, we have a, is it a surplus?
$20,000.
About $20,756.
And one thing I do want to note there, if you look under Bristol County Agricultural School, you'll notice a huge increase. No, the superintendent's not getting back to me. I've reached out to people in Easton, no one is getting back to me. I told the superintendent, I left a message, I said, we're trying to get our budget done, we need some figures. I don't know whether this is kicking in, this, it's the 70,000 assessment, I don't know whether it's kicking in this year or not, so, that could change, I don't know, so, trying to find that out from them. But right now, it's in there.
I know that, I know the assessments are kind of conservative on that new growth number, but I noticed it went down. They really anticipating a decrease in new growth?
Well, I know in the last few years, they've been conservative in May, and then in the fall, when they give better numbers, we've been able to raise it. So hopefully that'll happen again.
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Wait, I don't want to do any other.
I can do a couple, just to get a little radio going. Can I do a couple of them, just, some of them, just, you know, before the year?
Last night, Finance Committee voted on Article 2, which is the Chapter 90 money. They voted to recommend Article 2, it's $529,000 roughly. If Southeaston Regional did present their budget last night?
What, now?
3% increase.
We can hold off until next week.
Technically, I would just, actually, I think Michelle took it to like it.
So you want to hold out this year?
Yeah.
They took action on Chapter 93 services, and it's already done?
So, they approved Article 2, which is Chapter 90, if you want to vote on that tonight, that just is your authorization to allow us to spend the funds that come from Commonwealth.
It's not like we need an exact amount.
Motion to support Article 2 in the annual, May 14 meeting.
So.
Second?
Eric.
Second, sorry.
Further discussion?
Aye.
Opposed, in favor? Article 13, pre-services, that's $2,000?
$25,000.
$25,000. That's for use of cranes, and, you know, when Keith has to hire a company to come in and take out some of the bigger trees. I got up to the meeting last night and again explained, expressed my concern about the town with the tree ward. You know, you drive down any street, even after these major storms we had, you can't help but notice all the different damaged trees, and bad trees, and dead trees that are everywhere. And towns that, I think around 2007, 2008, pretty much lost the tree ward position. I heard last night, though, we're mandated by state law to have one, so we appropriate $2,000 a year, give it to the department, the highway department. It really isn't what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to have someone that can actually, you know, get out and service these trees. But this $25,000, when they, when they have to bring in bigger equipment to take down the bigger trees, cranes, that kind of stuff, they, they found that out with independent companies. Any questions?
Yeah, but technically, is Keith the tree warden? So we don't really have one?
The tree warden moved to New Hampshire, and we have to just appoint another tree warden.
I was going to say, is it something that you would, you would contract with a tree service company?
If they're willing to do it for $2,000. If they're willing to do it for our two thousand dollars.
Yeah. It's kind of like a retina, just to, it's not like they'd have to take down every tree in town for the two thousand. Just, you know, when they're, they're at peace and say, you know, these trees should be trimmed.
My understanding of the tree ward, it's not just a tree, it's to tell you whether you have a dead tree that needs to be removed.
Right, right.
That comes to us through, like, we had this issue back, see, our street, trees, dead trees down, and it wasn't a matter of, about this whole thing. So they'll determine whether that's unsafe to keep them on, basically, is that?
Right, yeah. And they also get special training, and training for, you know, to know when a tree is alive and when it's dead and all that. And also, really demanded, to tell the customer, tell the property owner that they have to remove that tree. And if we drive around town right now, I took a five-hour drive up to that second storm with the chief's wife, and I would say, most of the trees are either on the wires across people's homes, or on private property. It had nothing to do with Master Electric on that National Grid, I'm not, I'm not defending them, but for the most part, it was on private property. If you drive around town right now, there are so many dead trees that are gonna come down. There are three right across from my house right now that are not within a ten-foot buffer that the town controls, that if they come down, and they've been coming down to pieces, they're gonna take down the wires in front of my house. So there's a lot of that going on. Eight Pine Street's a perfect example. That one should've been ordered down. But we don't have, we don't have anyone with the ability to get order the guy to take it down.
What are we doing, actually, that we ask a homeowner or business owner to remove a tree because it's a hazard, and they don't remove it? Do you have to have a letter certified that the town's not responsible, or how does this work out for safety purposes?
I don't know how much power we have to tell someone to take a tree down on their property, but that's something that the tree warden would have to look at.
Sometimes it's just an act of God, and that's...
And again, Eight Pine Street, it's gonna come down. And that's probably a perfect example of why we need someone that's certified and qualified to do the job. Playing games with ourselves, we're appropriating two thousand dollars a year just because we have to, have to do it. Doesn't make sense. What about Article fifteen? Article thirteen was the tree services, the twenty-five thousand. You approve the discussion? Motion, second. Hold it in favor. Close, denounce. Article fifteen is a revolving fund?
Uh, we, they did vote on that.
Okay.
I just wanna let you know that we did put the RFQs for the senior center in the town hall into the central register today, and they're on, they're due back April thirtieth, and the building committee meets again May first and May seventh, to...
The North Public Schools, the placement project, is that still in the works?
Yeah, I asked the superintendent, he wasn't sure. My estimate is they're gonna have information for the May first or seventh building committee meetings, permanent building committee meetings, so they can review that. But they're not sure, it's still in the feasibility study stage.
So when you talk about a feasibility study for town hall and council meeting, but tell us what that means, so...
What they'll do is, well, like, the COA, they'll look at all the demographics, projected increase in senior population, they'll talk to the seniors and the Council on Aging Director, and talk about program, and what they wanna see as far as a program. And then they'll use all that information to figure out what size building and what it, what should be in the building, how much parking they need, what size lot they need. And it would be the same with the town hall, they'll look at what services we provide, what we're looking to do as far as meeting space and things like that, and then look at sites to see, same thing, where we could fit that building and parking, would behind here be suitable, things like that.
So we don't have to necessarily have a piece of property at this point, this is basically telling us, this is the side of the building, this is how much space parking you need, and this is what you really need for space.
And what it's gonna cost.
How many acres it's gonna be used, or whatever.
And what, what the cost is gonna be to design, engineer, build it.
Okay, but roughly, how much are you talking, you know?
For...
Just for the study?
Just for the study, I'm not sure. I know the schools was two hundred thousand for their feasibility study.
And this is gonna be taken out of that one-point-five million we appropriated before?
The schools, that project, we don't know. Just off the top of this head, the designer at the first meeting said it could be a six-million-dollar project, and that was two hundred thousand, so...
I think we need to be very clear from the get-go, based on our receipts and based on our income, incoming into the town, based on the needs of the town and the family. In my mind, there's no question at this point that we'd have to go for some kind of a debt exclusion on one of those of these buildings if that happens. There's no way we're gonna be able to pay for it, which is not gonna happen, which is... So I would be perfectly clear upfront that this is gonna be part of the process. Hopefully, we don't have to do that, we can find some creative ways to make it happen, but I'm not optimistic, so... Any others? Okay, the town managers' report.
I just wanna remind everyone that the town cleanup day is April twenty-first, and we'll meet at Highway Garage at eight in the morning, you know, run eight to twelve. So anyone that's out there that's interested, or knows kids in school that need service hours, they can contact me or contact Keith and give us their, their names, so we know, get an idea of how many people are gonna come. And if anyone knows any companies, then we're gonna try and have, see if some of the companies will have people available to help out. And if not, if they can help donate. One of the big things we noticed last year was we should've had bug spray, 'cause there were a lot of ticks out there, so, you know, three large cans of bug spray would be more than enough, gloves and bags. And so I know Wheaton will be helping us on, I'm sure, and looking forward to another successful townwide cleanup day.
So what you need, you need gloves, you need, you're looking for trash bags, gloves?
And bug spray.
Bug spray.
Those are all the same, the town's not that bad, the Round Creek Street's worse than others, but it's gotten a lot better. Over the last five years, it's really has gotten a lot better.
Sorry, my name is Cassie.
You'll have to come up, please.
Oh, sorry.
And by yourself?
No.
Will it get bright white on you?
This isn't a joke, right? It's really nice to do that. So hello, good evening, my name is Cassie Peltola, and I work at Wheaton College as the Assistant Director of Community Service and Engagement in the Center for Social Justice and Community Impact. And we just wanted to offer...
You helped us last time.
Say that again. Yes, and I just wanted to offer a hand and find out a little bit more about how to sign up, who exactly to contact, things like that. Um, yes, and, you know, just find out how finalized the date was set for the twenty-first, given that Mansfield's cleanup is on the twenty-eighth. We just wanted to check on that.
They are still doing it on the twenty-first.
Okay, sure, sure, okay, cool.
And so I'll give you, I think I might have a card here.
Sure, that'd be great.
You, folks here, my last year gave us a lot of help and service for that, we appreciate that.
Yes, of course.
We put a few of them out, and gave us some help. But, what do you expect, have you any idea how you expect to help this year?
Wheaton students, I would say from the Wheaton community, we could get anywhere from forty to sixty volunteers, we could get more if needed. One other thing I was wondering about was whether we were interested in hosting a community gathering after the cleanup, the same way we did last year. And, you know, so I just wanted to get, get your contact information and find out how we could be of help this year, again.
If you can send us some information, we'll be glad to broadcast it specifically after...
Sure.
After time, much later, we'd be glad.
Perfect, thank you.
And on the back of the card, I put, in case you don't get touch of me, Keith Silver's information, so...
Perfect.
You can give him a call tomorrow.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The next thing is, we were kinda surprised when we got this notice from Colton Page that we are now subject to OSHA. And I know, I sent it to Chief Schlecker, and he said, right after I got it, he was getting hung with emails from all the chiefs that had no idea that this was kicking in. So it kicks in, it takes effect on February first, two thousand nineteen. So we now will have to meet, we were always exempt from OSHA guidelines, now we're gonna have to meet OSHA guidelines. So I asked Keith also to check with the other highway superintendents to see what this is gonna require, and what are we gonna have to do in order to meet those guidelines. So it will be an expense.
But I see one part is, we need to know is how much is it gonna cost us. I mean, I'm not suggesting that's probably not a bad, probably a pretty good idea, but again, it's not one of those mandates that comes down the pipe that we're not expecting, now we're gonna have to pay for it.
So just to clarify a little bit on OSHA, they have OSHA ten, they have OSHA forty, so there are courses that everybody will probably need to take as far as being up to date on those. But if that's the case, so that means highways is not gonna be exempt anymore, water's not gonna be exempt from traffic blocks, is correct?
Probably not.
Okay, I'm just...
Yeah, we don't know yet.
That's an expense.
Yeah.
It's not a very costly expense, but it is gonna be an expense. And I think that that's where I'll need to follow with, you know, just for safety purposes. And that'll, that'll explain everything in the course of the, the OSHA course.
And I know the fire departments are concerned about they're running hydraulics, and they don't have hydraulic licenses, are they now gonna be required?
Well, the lattice rush is considered a hydraulic, and that requires a license under a D, DOT, which is anything that raises over three feet requires a hydraulic license.
I guess the main concern I have is, is the twenty-ninth of March and April first is the day that it all goes into effect, and we just got notified about it again, so...
Another mandate.
Yeah, and we're gonna have to pay for it.
It should be a grace bearing, though, right?
Um, well, it's not, it goes into effect February first, two thousand nineteen. So I'm sure, I'm sure that Serge, our group that we belong to, will be doing something, so... And Mager is gonna be doing something this summer, so that's how work has come.
Okay, notes you got?
And the other thing that, last week or the week before, we had a regional dispatch meeting, and the HR director from Foxborough was there, and had just been at a seminar, and all of a sudden found out that April first, we need this policy in place on pregnancy and pregnancy-related conditions. And no one, no one else, no one knew about this either, so have to get on the MMA and say, you gotta start letting us know about these things that spring up. So I've drafted a policy, basically the policy, you know, is so that you can't discriminate, discriminate against hiring someone that's pregnant, and also you have to make a combination of someone that's breastfeeding, and if there's a procedure, they feel that they're not, we're not treating them properly, that they can take under this situation. And I just ask that you vote to approve this, so we can put it into place on April first.
Should we hear it, George?
No, no. I believe we, we, the pregnancy-related conditions policy is...
Motion, second. Had a chance to read this, it's always, it's, in my opinion, it's somewhat vague in here.
Very vague.
You know, I mean, it's gonna open up a lot of grievances, it's gonna open up a lot of candy worms, but we're probably gonna end up spending a lot of legal money on, you know, talk about accommodations, and then they say, we'll not require a pregnant employee to accept accommodations. So, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be very tough to enforce any part of this, and it's gonna be, take a while for it all, I myself, I think.
And this is, no, this is state law, everybody bids Massachusetts.
I just, Tom, everybody likes... I guess we need a motion to, have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. As well as a favor?
I, I...
Close, denounce. Only because I have to.
Hey, Mike, uh, Mr. Chairman, do we have employment practices liability insurance that you're aware of?
I would assume...
Because they could probably help us refine the language in that, the carrier could...
Do we have that flexibility to change the language?
It's been reviewed by, yeah, I, we didn't just dream it up.
Oh, good, okay.
It was reviewed by attorneys before we...
That's probably why they made it big.
Yes.
Okay, is it, any else?
No.
Town manager report? Next, we have an appointment, resignation, retirements, we have the appointment of Chris Carmichael, Inspector of Buildings slash Building Commissioner.
Aye.
Come on up. Mr. Sullivan, would you read the motion?
Absolutely. This is a notice to the Board of Selectmen from Michael Dean, Unit's Town Manager, dated March twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. Regarding the notice of appointment of Inspector of Building and Building Commissioner, I hereby notify the Board of Selectmen that in accordance with the provisions of Article Four, Section Two B of the Nottin Charter, acting in my capacity as appointed authority, I appoint the following individual as Inspector of Buildings and Building Commissioner, Chris Carmichael. Said appointment was made on March twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, in accordance with the provisions of Nottin Charter, and will be effectively April tenth, two thousand eighteen, unless the Board of Selectmen votes to accept or reject this appointment prior to said date. I specifically request this Board of acceptance of this appointment with the effective date of April second, two thousand eighteen.
How progressive, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
How's your new board just off?
From Lakeville, currently I was in Braintree as a local inspector, previously I was in Middleborough. Prior to that, I was in business for myself for twenty-seven years doing commercial and residential remodels, new construction, so...
Mr. Unitz, as far as certifications and all that stuff, what do you, how do we look at?
Yeah, good, we actually had four applicants that had all the certifications required to be Building Commissioner, and I was impressed with all of them, but, you know, Chris stood out, and I feel that Chris would be the best for the job. And, you know, it was great talking with everybody that I had a chance to interview with, and I did find out how backward we are. We definitely need to get automated. Every single one of them has online permitting, and we definitely have to bite the bullet. And I know Chris is experienced in that, and is gonna look into that for me, see what systems are best and what the cost is. But we definitely have to get into the online permitting. And I know Chris did look at, also briefly, at our permit fees, and said that we do have room to increase those fees based on the towns around us, and what, you know, what they're charging, and can use that money hopefully to fund this system.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's funny you mention that, because I had, in my notes, the things I wanted to talk about was easy access to forms and computer, you know, computer technology, you can go online and do it. My opinion, based on what, and I'm not criticizing the people that work up there, because they're shot staff, in my opinion, as it is. We are leaving a lot of money on the table every year in fees for permits, because we can't handle the requests upstairs. People come into town hall, they expect the office to be covered, and they're coming in and finding us closed for an hour. It happened to my daughter, and she wanted to pull a permit, couldn't, and, you know, she's out on a lunch break, trying to come back, so one, one comment I would make to you is, try to figure out a creative way to make sure there's always somebody there to answer some of these questions, even if they just, here's a form, or...
Absolutely, I'll, I'll develop a FAQ, handout at the counter for...
Absolutely, I'll, I'll develop an FAQ, handout at the counter for, you know, for the questions, numerically asked. And as for fees, I'll work with the town managers, the units. And then as for online permitting, I think that's a step forward that we could all take, and it's gonna cut down on man hours, and then the ability of the applicant to do it at home or at their office prior to getting here, and saves trips and time, and it'll cut down, it actually saves the town money in the long run, so it's a, it's an investment in the future of the North.
Just being able to fill the form out, write on a copy, stick a check to it, and bring it in and put it in a slot, even, I mean, it makes, it makes a world of difference.
Absolutely.
And you know, we, we need to figure out a creative way, and what we, what we probably will do is, take what we generated in fees this year, and take a look at next year, and we can show the taxpayers of this town that we're actually making more money. By streamlining it, maybe we can get some more help up there, too, because I just feel strongly believing a lot of money on the table behind us, and we're never, never gonna capture that stuff again.
Well, I'll try to hit the ground running for you, and try to summarize something within a couple of months, on how we can make some adjustments and move forward with that.
Do us a favor, if you're getting some of these programs up to speed, feel free to come back and tell everyone what you're doing, so we, the public knows how to handle it, too.
Absolutely, I look forward to it, sir.
Mr. Steele?
Welcome to Norton.
Thank you.
I think one of the concerns I have in that office in the past has been, you know, clearly when you're dealing with contractors, you speak the language, they speak the language, you guys know what you're talking about.
We have our own dictionary.
Right, right. So my concern is, you mentioned the taxpayers of the town, when it's the homeowners that are doing projects, I think that in the past, they've kind of hit a wall a little bit, and I guess my request to you would be, you know, have a little bit of patience, and take a little bit more time with, with our residents who are trying to make improvements on their home. I think that's something that they haven't been given in the past, and yet, you know, as taxpayers, they are funding that, that office. And I know it's probably, you know, with the experience that you have, it's probably easier to just deal with contractors, but we, the town people need to be taken care of by that office.
Absolutely, I agree with you a hundred percent. I've seen that in other towns that I've dealt with, and yes, they do need a little bit more time and a little more explaining, and I, I know that's part of my job title, so, and job description, so I look forward to doing it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I think that's part of the frustration, they come in and, well, you need this form, then they fill out this form, they find out they have to talk to the zoning, CBA maybe, or they need to do, talk to the...
It should be one-stop shopping, I should hand them all the information at once, and then guide them through it, and then provide my information if they need additional information or questions for me, or have concerns, so no problems there.
If anyone wants to blame me for being in, to see them in today, it's because of the building inspector. And that was how I got involved. I didn't like the way I was treated, I was trying to build a home, couldn't get a straight answer out anybody, it cost me a lot of money in legal fees, I felt like I proved. It cost me about nine months' time that I didn't get back, put me right into the middle of winter trying to build a house, so that's why I'm, I went to join the finance committee, after that, I said, I wanna find out how the start works, and went on, you know, the selectmen, so. I find it to be a very, very important department. All these guys are mad at their building inspector, they're showing...
They're not being the same boat. I look forward to working with everybody, contractors, homeowners, and the board, especially Mr. Units. Absolutely.
The other thing we talked about, too, is the importance of having set hours, so that if contractors need to talk to the building inspector, they know they can see the building inspector at eight-thirty, whatever Chris works out, but eight-thirty to ten-thirty every morning, that's when the building inspector will be there. And if they, there's gonna be inspections scheduled, they know that inspections normally are gonna be scheduled from two to four, or whatever, so at least they have some idea of when things are gonna happen. I think that, you know, you don't, you don't run into that hassle, like with the clerk in the office, when someone comes in to see the building inspector, and, well, when's he gonna be in tomorrow? I don't know. You know, it's easier if there's set hours.
That's a great point.
I will set hours for you, morning and afternoon office hours, so that everybody can be accommodated, and Thursday nights as well, so, absolutely. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. The thing that I'd like, I'd like to see happen in the future, and I know we talked about it for a long time, is our, our part-time inspectors, we have electrical, plumbing, etc. We need to wait, we need to change the way we pay them. They should be getting paid by percentage of the permanent to go out and inspect. It's very hard today to ask people to get out of bed and go out for twenty bucks. I mean, those days are gone, so I know we need to focus on the rate, yeah, Mr. Kimmel, you get out of bed for twenty bucks. They're all accepted to do that, it's just a way to change it down the road, or, you know, make it more workable for our part-time guys. Again, I'm gonna hit the ground running for you Monday, and I'll address all these issues for the board. We're not asking you to change your own overnight. No, I, I don't anticipate doing so.
We're here to help, too.
That's good to hear.
Recommendations, if you find something that you need, you know, if there's technology that you don't have, and you don't have the money, come and see us, we'll work with the finance committee to give you the tools you need.
Excellent.
It must be more frustrating than trying to pull something together, and you don't have the money to do it. So let us know if there's anything we can do to help.
Oh, I think you've addressed them here tonight, the fact that we're still on a paper system, the need to go all digital, I think it's gonna, they're busting out of the seams, through the walls right now as it is, so going digital is gonna help in saving money in the future, so, record-keeping and whatnot, so.
Just a question on the going online. Now, people can file permits.
Mm-hmm.
Are they able to check the status of them?
Absolutely. So it's a, it's basically, it's a chat system through the emails. So they'll, they'll send the application in, I'll review it the next morning when I arrive, and then I'll send out the list, or I'll provide them a checklist of items to do, and then we'll have a chat back and forth, and then once all the documents are submitted, then I can issue the permit. So they don't even have to come in. Then there's a PayPal account that we set up, they pay for the permit online, so I never even see the person until I go out in the field, so it's, it's a huge time saver and money maker in the future, so it's, it's definitely something the town needs to look into soon. So I'm gonna hit the, again, I'll start looking into it immediately as soon as I get on.
I need to keep where there's communication, that's the biggest complaint I've been getting is, especially, let's say I put a window, and I do a pull-up permit, and I'm gonna put a window on the house, and then they're waiting for a final inspection. And I know a lot of times, you don't do that, because if you have to, if you hire someone who knows what they're doing, they're gonna put it in anyway. Most people say, well, when's the final inspection? And I've said, well, maybe there's not gonna be one.
No, if I issue a permit, it's the law that I have to do an inspection, so I'll, we'll close out all the permits, I know we have a lot open right now, so I'll be looking into that, and I'll be addressing other issues as, as they arise. But I look forward to being a positive representative of the town, and working with the board, and all the other departments, so I look forward to the mission.
It's refreshing. I do work for twenty bucks an hour, so.
Excellent.
When you start doing the math, and you ask, hey, I used to work sixty hours a week...
You see the tools he's gonna bring, you don't wanna hire him. I'll pay the twenty dollars. He'll actually work for ice creams.
Yeah, pretty much. Ice cream cookies and strawberry, strawberry jam.
So rich.
Anything else? Okay, standing on a chair, intended motion to, according to the provision of Article 4, Section 2B of the Norton Charter, acting in my capacity as appointed authority, to appoint the following individual to the Inspector of Buildings/Building Commissioner, Christopher Carmichael, acted April 2, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, ready for discussion. Standing on all the favor?
Aye.
Post, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much. I look forward to working with you.
We're here to help you.
Appreciate that.
I'd just like to thank Brian Butler for what he's done to help us out over the last few months, and wish him the best on where he goes from here.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good night, thank you, I appreciate it.
Welcome to Norton. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
On the other two, do you want to move, Mr. Chairman? On the other two, do you want to move?
Yep. So next on the agenda, we have appointment of resignations of two members of the fire department. What do we do, the acting lieutenant first?
Yes. This is to the Board of Selectmen from Michael D. Units, town manager, dated March 26, 2018. Notice of appointment of acting lieutenant, I hereby notify the Board of Selectmen that in accordance with the provisions of Article 4, Section 2B of the Norton Charter, acting in my capacity of the appointed authority, I appoint the following individual as a full-time acting lieutenant in the Norton Fire Department, Christopher Ferreira. The appointment was made on March 26, 2018, and will be effective on April 10, 2018 unless the Board of Selectmen votes to accept or reject this appointment prior to said date. I specifically request the Board of exceptions to this appointment with effective date of April 8, 2018.
Motion, have a second? Second. Mr. Units, can you tell us why we're making these changes?
Yeah, well, the deputy chief retired, so we had someone move up to deputy, and then lieutenant move up, so we have these positions available.
This is a position of acting lieutenant.
Right.
Does that mean?
Until there's an exam, and, because we're civil service, so we have to have a civil service exam, and then we can, this is more or less provisional appointment, until after that exam, we can hire a prime lieutenant.
Question? Standing on a chair, motion to accept the appointment of Christopher Ferreira to the acting position of full-time acting lieutenant in the Norton Fire Department, acted April 8, 2018. Thank you. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, unanimous. Mr. Sullivan?
Chairman, thank you. To the Board of Selectmen from Michael D. Units, town manager, dated March 26, 2018. Regarding a notice of appointment for provisional fire captain, I hereby notify the Board of Selectmen that in accordance with provisions of Article 4, Section 2B of the Norton Charter, acting in my capacity as the appointed authority, I have appointed the following individual as a full-time provisional fire captain in Norton Fire Department, Captain Roberts. The appointment was made on March 26, 2018, and will be effective on April 10, 2018 unless the Board of Selectmen votes to accept or reject the appointment prior to said date. I specifically request this Board of exceptions of this appointment with effective date of April 8, 2018.
Motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second. This is provisional fire captain.
Same, yeah.
So here's two different terms.
Yeah, I don't know. And this is the, to fill the position that Sean Simmons had, for Sean, acting lieutenant.
And the provision will be, the position will be filled once the civil service has been met. You have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, unanimous, thank you. Selectmen report mail, Mr. Sullivan?
I don't have anything, sir.
Mr. Pramow?
The only, I just have a question. Last week, we were talking about the Capitol apartments, and I asked about, like, the building inspector to check out buildings, if there were a good chance...
We're actually having a home inspection done next week, and I'm gonna have the building inspector look at it.
Can you come back and report to the next meeting, just to let us know?
While I'm thinking of it, last fall, when Mr. Freeman was here, we had spoke about checking out the Rose Farm, conservation land, and you were supposed to look for mowing, you were supposed to look to find out who's got the key to the gate, so you get a chance, you try to find the key.
Yep.
I could sidetrack, forgot about it, except several times during snowstorms, I wasn't going down that path.
We can't find it here, we can take a walk, or...
Leave conservation hazard, but I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Steele, you have any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, under warrants and minutes, my report on the following payroll and invoice warrants, I intend a motion to approve my weekly payroll warrant of a PR 20 for the period ended March 24, 2018, dated March 29, 2018, the amount of $1,239,509.89.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, on PR 20, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, unanimous. And intended motion to approve the invoice warrant, AP 39, dated March 29, 2018, the amount of $1,167,273.78.
So moved.
Motion second, any further questions? Standing on all the favor?
Aye.
Post, unanimous. Okay, on the next meeting agenda, we're gonna have it at the... Are we having it? At the library? Is it gonna be available?
Yes.
Right. We're gonna have, our next meeting will not be here, it'll be at the Norton Library on April 12, and we're going to do a swearing-in ceremony for five new Norton firefighters, swearing-in for fire department chaplains, recognition of retired fire personnel, along with a review or vote on town meeting, especially town meeting audits. If you have anything else you wanna bring forward, make sure you get in touch with Mike or myself, and let me, make sure we bring on the next agenda. Okay.
Chairman, I have one more thing that I just found, like, Carol hid it in here somewhere. I have to, I have to read this, please.
See, you're right, you never did read that.
Join us for a community pancake breakfast, and it's a reschedule, and this is at Saturday, April 14, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Emerson Dining Hall. Parking available in Lot 1, Agent to Elizabeth the Men Nursery School. Greetings and friends and neighbor, extending an invitation to all friends and neighbors of Wheaton College to join us for a pancake breakfast. This will be a great opportunity for you to connect with all your neighbors and enjoy some time with our beautiful campus. In addition to a wonderful breakfast, the program will include a performance by our talent students, Robert Kimble, no, just kidding. Hopefully you'll be able to join us, Dennis Eno President.
I went last year, I'll be there again, that was a great, that was a great breakfast session. I won't be singing, I'll play you.
Thank you.
Any else? I declare in the general laws... I declare under Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Section 3, the purpose of the executive session will be discussed strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and to consider the... Because a discussion of the strategy in open session would compromise the purpose of the executive session, and the board not, not to return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
I move the board over to executive session in General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 12, 21A, A3, the purposes and reasons declared by the chairman, and the board not returning to open session thereafter.
Good motion, have a second. Second. Make further discussion? Standing on, Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Pramow? Nigel Goyas? Thank you. Thanks, Sean.